Good evening. We want to say good evening to everyone that's here on tonight, this evening. I want to thank you all so much for showing your concerns in the city of Greensboro, in the business of City of Greensboro. Again, we're thankful to have you on tonight. Tonight, we're going to ask that Councilman Miller would open us up with prayer, and immediately after prayer, we'll go into our agenda.
Let us pray, and wish God his forgiveness and his acceptance. We thank God for allowing us another opportunity to sit around this area. Sit around and look out for the wonders of this city. We pray, God, that the city that we make fit the diseases for development of your people. You ask, you, God, to keep us, to build us, to build us, as we stand united, as the Bible is taught. We pray, God, that you unite us so we can make this city, the city that you have it to be. You ask your name, you guide us in the way you have it to go. Let this day be shaped as only you can. Let our commitment to God be as only you can. This is my prayer in this evening. In Christ's name you pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for that opening prayer. Let the minister reflect that everyone is present on tonight. Brings us down to number three on the agenda, the approval of the September 6, 2022, regular session. Counselor, I give you time to read over that. Once you've read over it, ask that you would signify that you're ready by raising your right hand. Everyone is ready. I entertain a motion and a second to accept the minutes of September 6, 2022.
Motion.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Brings us down to number four. Ms. Kail Hammonds and Kendrick Ward, the supervisors, report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It is always a pleasure to come and stand before y'all and share the work that we're doing in the Community Development Department and in the Main Street Office. And, you know, I'd really just like to start by thanking all of you for your support and for the work that we do. We very much, Kendrick and I, feel very passionately about our jobs and our work for the city. And we really enjoy having the opportunity to come and share some of our updates over the last six months with you guys. So you may remember, the way that we generally handle our supervisors' reports is at the end of the year, which has kind of creeped into like January and February, we give you a big bound report where we tell you, okay, this is 12 months' worth of what we've been doing. And then about halfway through, which is this report tonight, we give you a truncated version of that report where we show you, okay, this is what we've been up to for the first half of the year. So tonight, we're going to share with you what we've done for the first part of 2022. So with that said, we generally organize our discussion according to the four points of the Main Street program, the Main Street approach. And so that's economic restructuring, design, organization, and promotion. And so you have a little handout in front of you, and we're going to go through each of those sections and share with you a little bit about what we've done. And Kendrick and I will kind of bounce back and forth, so it'll also give you a feel for who worked on which different project in the office. So I'm going to skip down and start with the community home improvement grants, the CHIP grants. So you may remember that Greensboro received a third CHIP grant award for $300,000. And that CHIP grant was put on hold during the pandemic. It is intended to fund owner-occupied rehabilitation of houses in Greensboro. And it's intended to fund rehabilitation of owner-occupied housing in Greensboro. And so now that things have calmed down with the pandemic and people are comfortable having folks in and out of their homes, contractors, things like that, we've actually put that project back out to bid. And we have two homes that are going to go through the CHIP rehabilitation process with us. We have contractors who are pre-qualified and received bid packages, there's a bug in front of me, sorry, received big packages just the other day, or at the end of last week. And so we'll be receiving bids in the next few weeks from contractors on that project and hopefully get those two houses going soon. So that's the status of CHIP. The other thing we've done in the area of economic restructuring is maintain Greensboro's GIC certification, Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. I know Mr. Miller was on our housing team when we initially went through the GIC process. And Greensboro has been certified as a GIC community for three different cycles. We initially went through the training, and then we have to continue to maintain certain standards in order to continue to be certified as a GIC community. So we're maintaining that certification for Greensboro. And that helps us on various grant applications, like CHIP, for example, some of the other things like Community Development Block grant applications, all of those things, we sometimes get extra bonus points if we're a CHIP or a GIC community. The other thing in economic restructuring is our rural zone tax credits. Greensboro was designated in the second round of cities as a rural zone community. And our designation is set to expire at the end of 2023. These are really lucrative tax credits for people who invest in downtown Greensboro. They get tax credits for investing in property, rehabilitating property, creating jobs. And so we, in our office, have done, kind of, we're pushing out information about the program so that people know, like, if you want to use this, you've got about 12 months before it's set to expire. And we really hope that people will continue to use the program. So Kendrick's going to tell you a little bit about some of the grand openings and ribbon cuttings, and also our businesses gained and lost year to date.
So one of the things we track is how many businesses open in downtown and also how many businesses close. Since January, we have had four new businesses open in downtown Greensboro, equivalent to having 10 new jobs created in downtown. And we've lost two businesses. We gained Maine and Broaden Maine Antiques, which is at 101 North Main Street, the Burt Food Truck, which is at Oconee Brewing, Family Ties Barbecue, which is 118 South Main Street, and Zen's Doggy Spa. And then we've also lost the Greensboro Pharmacy this year and Royal King's Beauty Supply. But we're also working hard to fill these vacant seats, vacant spaces with new businesses to come in. So if you'll turn the page with me, we'll skip on over to design for downtown. Design is how we look in downtown, how we incorporate our historic preservation in downtown. And this past year, we had five new solar boxes added to downtown Greensboro. We got that, we got these solar boxes through a grant. So this is a new walking tour for downtown Greensboro to allow tourists and also locals to hear stories about our different stops. And we've created a marketing piece, which is on our, done the promotion side, about all the solar boxes we had. We had two already, so we just added the five more. One of the other things we work in design is, pre 2022, or 21, the Main Street Office had a design studio. Well, they closed the design studio through our Main Street Office through the state. So it was very important for us to continue to offer facade rehabilitation, design renderings to merchants that want to come into downtown Greensboro. So we have partnered with the Main Street Studios out of Athens, and we offer, we've offered six design studio facade grant rehabs to six different businesses in downtown to try to get them open. One of the main ones that would probably stick out to you is 111 North Main Street. It's the old Chamber building. He went through the process and went from the red brick with the green shutters to that beautiful green with the black awnings and the yellow doors. So those are some of the things that we do in our office and partner with to make, so that these business owners can look and see how cool their building would be if they put a new paint color on it. And then I'll let Kail take over with the street improvements.
Sure. So we continue to pursue funding for streetscape improvements in downtown. Streetscape is basically our sidewalks, our streetlights, benches, landscaping, things like that. We have been currently operating under a Georgia Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program grant, a TAP grant. That was for about $474,000 and funded back in FY19. And so that grant funded the preliminary design and engineering work for streetscape improvements, mostly along East Broad Street. It also includes a little section of West Street as well. So that project is moving along nicely. It's moving through GDOT's design process, which is very intense and complicated, but we're, you know, we're making steady progress. And it's now ready to move into the right-of-way phase, which is the next step of any GDOT project. And so we have submitted for funding under the this year's call for TAP, TAP projects, for right-of-way funding. And we submitted in June, when the initial call for projects went out. Well, I guess they didn't get very many applications because they put out a second call for projects, for TAP projects later on in the summer. And so it turned out that we were eligible to apply again in the second call. And so I actually applied twice for TAP this year. And the second application was to start the engineering and design process for the next phase of our streetscape, phase five of streetscape, which would be along Court and East Street. So it would be like a step behind the Broad Street section. And we expect funding announcements for this round of TAP, really later, by the end of September, is what they're telling us. So very excited about that. The mayor said, "Kail, are you applying for this grant?" And I said, "I've already done it." And then I dug in and I looked a little bit more, and I was like, "Oh, gosh, I guess I need to do it again." So we actually, we applied twice for TAP in this, in this current round. So that was actually really exciting for us. Moving on, the other, the other section of Main Street and the Main Street approach is basically organization. So if you're going to, if you're going to do good work in your downtown, you've got to make partnerships, you've got to be organized, you've got to have trained staff. And so this section just really gives you an overview of some of that. Kendrick has done a fabulous job keeping us certified with the Office of Downtown Development and keeping us certified as a National Trust Main Street City. We both are still super proud of the fact that Greensboro is a Georgia exceptional Main Street, a gem. There are not very many of those in the state, and I believe we're still the smallest gem. And there's fewer than 20 gems. And we were designated very early on, and we have worked really hard to maintain that designation. So that's something for us as a community to really be proud of. Staff training. Most of our training lately has been focused on having the GDOT training in place, the Georgia Department of Transportation training in place, that we need to be able to go after TAP funding. So it's wonderful when an agency puts out a call for grants and funding and things like that. But a lot of times, there's certifications that your community has to have before you can even be eligible to apply for it. GIC is kind of like that, the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. And through the Georgia Department of Transportation, LAP certification, Local Area Project Administration is part of that. So Kendrick and I have done a lot of those classes. I know the city manager has done several as well. And then also on our staff training list, our, our mayor, Corey Williams, completed Main Street 101. And so we were very appreciative of his time. And we extend an invitation to any of you who haven't done Main Street 101. If that's something you're interested in, we'd love to facilitate getting you registered for that class. So moving on down, a big part of organization, as I mentioned earlier, is partnerships with other organizations out in the community. And I know I've spoken with this body before about a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. You guys authorized the city to pursue a grant called the Innovative Grant from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs that would ultimately fund infrastructure improvements for a Habitat-led project called Baines Creek. I wanted to circle back to you all and let you know that we did submit a pre-application for that grant, and it was well-received. And DCA, the Department of Community Affairs, came back and said, "Greensboro, we'd love to invite you to submit a full application for innovative funding." And at the end of the day, Habitat for Humanity determined that they would not be able to pursue an application in this funding cycle due to timing constraints. So we have tabled that for now. We will not be moving forward with that innovative grant that you guys authorized back. It was in the winter sometime that we were talking about that. So I just wanted to kind of close that loop with you all and let you know that we're not pursuing that at this time.
One of the last things in organization is, we partner with the Augusta Visitor Center off of I-20 every year. This is something we've been doing for nearly 10 years now. They have a box in the Augusta Welcome Center. And we go down and we decorate it for Greensboro. And it's one of the things that we track, our tourism, it helps us track our tourism for downtown. So we had it from the months of May to August, and actually, one week in September. But during that time, we had 141,000 people that saw our box, that brought traffic to downtown Greensboro. Our merchants love us. It's very inexpensive for us. And it costs us about two cents per person that sees our box every single year to drive traffic to maybe want to come back here and visit and spend money, or even potentially move here. We've had some people, like, buy houses in Greensboro because of stopping at the Welcome Center and seeing how lovely our town is.
Finally, on the next page, under organization, I feel like it's important for all of you to know the things that we're working on. And sometimes we work on things that aren't pure Main Street, because Greensboro is a small town, and we're always willing to jump in and help wherever we're needed. And especially over the last couple of years with the pandemic, that has certainly been the case. So I wanted to just kind of provide you with an overview. A lot of this, you're already going to be knowledgeable of. But I did want to share with you that our office worked on helping to secure some of the pandemic relief funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. There was a lot of paperwork that had to be submitted. There were documents that we had to provide in order to receive those funds. There's an annual report now that we have to complete each year. And so if you look at the little chart there, it just kind of gives you an overview of, you know, when were we working on it, what were we doing, what did it end up being used for, just so that you, you know what, what we're spending our time on. And so I wanted y'all to be aware of that. And I've also included some quick takeaways about ARPA funding for Greensboro, just so that when you hear information in the news about the different funding, you can make sure you're comparing apples to apples and that what you're hearing is actually applicable to our community. So I definitely am not an expert on it, but both of us have spent a good amount of time listening to webinars and trying to make sure that we know how that, how those resources can be used in our community so that Greensboro doesn't miss out on anything. So I just wanted y'all to have a little bit of that information. And I believe the rest is all permission. So Kendrick's going to tell us about all the fun things.
The one last thing in organization that we do is we track downtown data. And since July, this little chart, kind of is through July, that you have in front of you, the big number that really stands out for us, being a small community, when I did our public-private investment calculation, so far, since January to July, $1.7 million has been invested in downtown Greensboro, in our commercial district. That's amazing for a small town. There are towns around us that are twice and three times our size that don't even have that much in like the six months, almost seven months. So that is a, I'm very pleased with it. But that was definitely six buildings sold, and it also had three commercial rehabilitations to the houses, to the buildings in downtown. So that is one of the reasons the number is so big. So the last thing we do in Main Street is promotion, is our last four points. So since August, we have had two events in downtown. The Southland Jubilee was back this year. It was a rainy start of the day, so we had quite a few people that no-showed. But if you sign up to come to Jubilee and don't show up, you don't get your money back. So I hated that they didn't come because it ended up being a great day. It was beautiful. The vendors that were here actually said they had a great day. Our merchants have completely said that the Jubilee is full back, full back and full force, so they are happy with their cash registers ringing. And then also in June, we had our summer concert with a little kid from Athens who's 20 years old that people really like, and a 90s tribute. And we had roughly 1,000 people that came to that summer concert in the four hours that we have. And the last thing for promotion is our marketing efforts. We always put out a 2020, or we always put out a marketing rack card for events. So that was produced. We are reprinting and updating our downtown brochure. We do, we print about 20,000 of those that go across the state and also are locally. We had our solar box walking tour that y'all have in front of you. We redid our downtown website. We have some print ads and also the Augusta Visitor Center. So those are a few of the snapshot things we've done for promoting downtown to get to drive traffic here. And that's our report.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we have for you tonight. And we're always available to answer questions in this format, or even just if you wanted to reach out to us individually. We love sharing about the work that we do, and we're always available for you.
Thank you all so much, and keep doing the great job that you're doing. Councilman Moore, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City manager, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No.
City clerk?
No.
Councilman Miller?
I just have one question. I need to talk to you, Kail.
Yes, sir.
And I'll give you a call maybe tomorrow, Wednesday morning. I just wanted to talk to you about CHIP.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman River?
No.
Councilman Neal?
No, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Kendrick, you go stick around, right?
I am. I'm not moving.
All right.
So the next thing, I guess, on the agenda that I have for y'all is our holiday lighting contract. It's a renewal contract with Christmas Decor out of Covington. It is to light, wrap eight trees around downtown Greensboro with white lights, our Leland Cypress tree that we put on the courthouse hall for the lighting of the tree, a total of 38 light poles with white lights, garland, and red bows at the top, and also our bistro lighting. Y'all should have that packet in front of you.
Council, do you all see the packet for the renewal, a decorating renewal? Should have came out with this first agenda.
And it's the same company we've been using for years. They hold our lights for us. Part of this is we rent the lights from them, and they put them up, guarantee them, have insurance on them. So it's definitely, they know what they're doing.
You guys have a chance to look at it? I'll give you a chance to look at it. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Initial payment options.
Mm-hmm.
Option one, partial down payment. Then we have option two, full payment with prepaid incentive save. Are we shooting for that 18, or are we going with the your total?
No, we're going, we're shooting for the initial, the 18. If we pay, if we pay early and let them install early, we get a discount on it.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? Councilman Moore?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Council, any questions? I entertain a motion and a second to accept the decorating renewal for 2022. Motion?
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All those opposed, let it be known by the same sign. 4-1 vote. I'm sorry, 3-1 vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamar Callaway, would you please take the stand? Lamar is coming to give us a report on our water department, clean water department, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be with you tonight. Just wanted to kind of give you an overview of what's going on at the water treatment plant. Of course, you probably all know that the water treatment plant is located on Highway 278, about three miles out of town. And then the raw pumping station is another three miles down on Lake Oconee, a little brick building right there on, at the bridge there at Lake Oconee. Now, we pump with three high-service pumps from the raw pumping station. We alternate those pumps from time to time. But two of them are five years old, and one of them is 42 years old. And so we pump up to the water treatment plant, and we are permitted for 3.3 million gallons per day out of Lake Oconee. Now, we can't produce that much, and I'll get to that. But we, we have, the water, you know, goes through a 12-inch pipe up to the water treatment plant. We treat the water there. And we have three high-service pumps there that pump water into town. Now, we, we alternate the using, the usage of those pumps. Two of them are about five years old. One of them is 42 years old. We're in the process of getting bids on both the raw pump that's 42 years old and the high-service pump at the plant that's 42 years old to replace those. So that's where we stand there. We are in, right now, we have, we are pumping 687,000 gallons a day. That's on an average, 687,000 gallons. That's a lot for a little community like we have. But we're, like I said, we're permitted to withdraw it, 3.3 million. And we're, the plant itself can only produce 1.5 million because it's designed that way. You know, the filters are designed that way for 1.5 million. So we're, you know, a little less than half capacity. So at full capacity, you would certainly have to run 24 hours a day, you know, and you'd have to, you know, upgrade the plant somewhat. So anyway, that's where we stand now. Last year, we, if I take the numbers from June of last year, let's just say, last year, June, we were up this year by 7.2%. In July, we were up 12.5% as much of the water we produced. And in August, it was up 3%. So as an average of those, of those three months, we were, we had increased 7.6%. So we can see a steady increase in our, in our usage, in our, in our sales. So that's where we are. That is an average of 11.1, you know, 11.1 hours per day. So you can see, and that's on, you know, seven days a week, you know. So that's a, that's where we are with our hours. Now, we have, we have myself and another operator that are Class Ones, and then Terry Searjic is there with us with a, with a Class Two, excuse me, with a Class Three. He's working on his Class Two license. So, you know, I know we've talked about, you know, increasing our production, and Mike would need to put on another operator if that, if we had to go to more hours than 11 hours a day. So the plan is running very, very well. The only thing that I can see is that we'll need to upgrade those pumps moving forward.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
No questions.
Yeah, I have one. Mr. Callaway, when you say upgrading the pump, which I know is one 42 years old, how soon are you talking about upgrading it?
Well, I've got bids in right now. So we, I think the last time I came before the council, I kind of hinted that also. And so Mr. Neal and I, we've talked about it a little bit. So we are getting those bids in as we speak.
Thanks, sir. That's it.
Any more questions from the council? None. Thank you, Mr. Callaway. Keep doing the great job that you're doing.
Thank you.
Next on, we'll be down on number six on the agenda, second reading of the annexation of parcel 070A000410. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
This is the second hearing for this annexation. The City of Greensboro is the applicant in this case, using, because while this property abuts,
So, you know, I know we've talked about, you know, increasing our production and might would need to put on another operator if that, if we had to go to more hours than 11 hours a day. The plan is running very, very well. The only thing that I can see is that we'll need to upgrade those pumps moving forward.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
No questions.
Yeah, I have one. Mr. Callaway, when you say upgrading the pump, which I know is one 42 years old, how soon are you talking about upgrading it?
Well, I've got bids in right now. So we, I think the last time I came before the council, I kind of hinted that also. And so Mr. Neal and I, and we've talked about it a little bit. So we are getting those bids in as we speak.
Thanks, sir.
Any more questions from the council? None, thank you, Mr. Callaway.
Thank you.
Keep doing the great job that you're doing.
Thank you.
Next on, we'll be down on number six on the agenda. Second reading of the annexation of parcel 0708000410. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
This is the second hearing for this annexation. The city of Greensboro is the applicant in this case using, because while this property ad butts, city property, it is, it's just county. And there's a large piece of property around it, that's approximately 120 acres, that if it were to be annexed in, this, if we don't annex this parcel in 1211 Armour Circle, it would become an island, a county island in the city. So to be compliant with state law, we're requesting that we, to annex this property in. It's only one acre. And the owners, you know, we've notified the owners. They have not spoken out against this annexation, neither in favor nor in opposition. And this, if you were to approve this, this would be contingent on the approval of parcel 088000010, which is a 120-acre parcel directly behind this piece. Again, it's just one acre. We're requesting that you annex it in as it's currently A2, which is residential agricultural, Green County. We're requesting to be annexed in as R1 low-density residential. So it was maintain the same use, maintain this, it would stay basically the same, just come into the city.
Council, any questions? No questions. No questions. You've heard the request coming from Ms. Claire to annex this piece of property at 1211 Armour Circle and rezoning, rezoning from A2 Agricultural Residential to R1 Low Density Residential. I entertain a motion to approve this annexation. Motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, unanimous decision. Thank you, Ms. Claire.
Thank you very much.
Brings us down to number seven, adoption of the millage rate for 2022, 2023. City manager, if you would head us off.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, the highest inflationary millage rate that will support our oncoming budget for 2022, 2023 is actually a millage rate decrease of .019 mils of 5.723, if you choose to adopt it.
Any questions coming from the council?
I'm looking at it, but if I hear correctly, Mr. Manager?
Yes, 5.723.
Yeah, gotcha. That's down from 5.742, right?
Yes, sir, it was a rollback.
Yeah. Thanks, sir.
Any more questions coming from the council? No further questions? Entertain a motion and a second to adopt the millage rate for 2022, 2023.
Motion?
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Brings us down to number eight, which is unfinished business. As of right now, I have none. Councilman Moore, do you have any unfinished business?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk? Councilman Miller?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers?
No.
Councilman Neal?
No, sir.
All right, brings us down to number nine. I have no new business either. Councilman Moore, do you have any?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk? Councilman Miller?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers?
No.
Councilman Neal?
No, sir.
All right, brings us down to number 10, public comments. We're going to hold these comments to a two-minute minimum, two-minute minimum. You are now, we're now asking for public comments. No public comments. All right, no public comments. Going once, going twice?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come and say that I'm proud of the mayor and the city councilmen and thank you guys for focusing on the issues of the city of Greensboro. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brings us down to number 11 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Entertain a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
It's been second, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Councilwoman Rivers, I ask that you would pray us out on tonight.
Well, that's great. I always thank you for the time and your spirit. Take care of the city's business. Continue to lead the gathering the way that you have us to go. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you all so much for your time.